Good evening and welcome to this, the November 23rd meeting of the Livermore City Council. I called me into order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Here.
Councilmember Coomer.
Here.
Councilmember Carling.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Here.
Mayor Marshawn.
Here. Okay. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Brown Act and most recent executive orders issued by the governor to facilitate teleconferencing to reduce the risk of COVID-19 transmission at public meetings. The city of Livermore has met all of the applicable noticing requirements of the public and the public is welcome to participate in this meeting. I'm going to take a few moments to explain the process that we'll be using in this meeting. Tonight, we are using the Zoom meeting platform and YouTube. The Zoom and YouTube meeting links are available on the city of Livermore website and on the agenda. Tonight, we're using the Zoom meeting platform. Members of the public can participate by submitting public comment through the Zoom Q and A feature or by raising their hand or pound nine, or excuse me, star nine, if you're calling out on the phone, when I open public comment for the item you wish to speak on. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item regarding only the closed session. Oh, only that meeting item on the agenda. Comments should be no more than 500 words or three minutes. If you submit multiple comments on a single item to the Q and A feature, the last comment will be read into the record and all of the other comments will be added to the final meeting record. The public comment period closes at the conclusion of the comments being read into the record. So with that, if everybody could put themselves on mute, I will, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We just came out of closed session and I see city attorney, is there any reportable action out of the closed session?
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. No, there was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Okay, very good. With that, I would go on to proclamations and presentations, and tonight we really have something remarkable. I think this is a record in commitment to public service. Tonight, I would like to recognize James N. Doggett. Mr. Doggett has for over 43 years represented the city of Livermore on the Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District Board of Directors. So with that, I have a certificate of recognition that I would like to present to Mr. Doggett. And this is the mayor's recognition presented to James N. Doggett for over 43 years of service as the Livermore representative to the Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District Board of Directors. Your dedication and commitment to promoting the safety and well-being of the Livermore community is commendable. On behalf of the city council and Livermore residents, thank you for your dedication. And we will be, this will be at the, I guess we will either mail this or I make an appointment to pick it up at City Hall, the city clerk will, will get in touch with you on this. But Mr. Doggett, thank you so much for your many years of service on the mosquito abatement district. That's a little known district, but it's extremely important as far as vector control and disease control throughout the region. So once again, thank you very much. Would you like to make a comment?
I only wanted to. I just wanted to thank the city for the plaque. I've enjoyed my whole time on the mosquito abatement district. Started back with an appointment by Helen Terseal, which is a
Wow.
Long time ago. Oh, yeah. And, and been on ever since. And they, it's really been a great organization to work with. And I'm pleased I was reappointed all these times. Anyway.
Well. Another legend. So it isn't really because that Albany was let into the baby district, was it?
No, but it was kind of a nice, a nice ending.
We finally got him in.
All these years, we've been trying to get Albany in the district, and now they are.
Well, great. Well, now it's a complete, complete set. So, Mr. Doggett, thank you so much for your many years of service. It's greatly appreciated. And you and I are both retiring. So best wishes always for a long and healthy retirement.
Well, thank you.
All right, now we're moving on to the citizens forum. These are items that are not on the agenda, but the city council cannot deliberate nor take action on these. But you're welcome to make comments. 500 words or three minutes. And I believe we have someone that wishes to speak. You spoke a little bit earlier and now's your chance. This is Marion Yoxell.
Yes, Marion Adams, actually.
Came up under chat. So, okay, very good then.
It's all right, I answered to Yoxell too, thank you. Um, so I'm really concerned about the state of Livermore's trees. In the almost 10 years that I've lived in town, I've seen trees being cut down by PG&E activity, lost to drought and removed by homeowners. And I, and I'll see that a lot of the existing trees, especially the redwoods are stressed and I'm afraid that we're going to lose them in the future. And I'm really concerned that not enough new trees are being planted and that there are too few young, healthy trees growing up to replace the lost trees. And as a result, we're, we're experiencing net loss of our urban forest canopy. And so I'm, I'm kind of asking the council to help. And I want to take some action so that our city can be as cool and shady as possible in the future. And so my thoughts on actionable things that we can do right now are, one, can the city of Livermore produce a GIS urban canopy analysis that shows changes in tree cover over the last 10 or so years? I think there's publicly available aerial photography data and satellite data that, that somebody can crunch numbers on this. And we can actually see, see the state of the trees, the urban forest canopy. I think that the results will show a net loss of trees. And I haven't, I'm, I'm wondering how trees, my second thought is I'm wondering how tree concerns and policies are handled at the city level? Do we have a city arborist who's responsible for tree issues? And what are they doing to ensure the health of our urban forest? I'm wondering how trees are selected? Is the city, for example, replacing large overstory trees like oaks and sycamores with small understory trees like crepe myrtles and calorie pears, which would result in a net loss to the canopy? And like, what are the barriers to planting large species trees? Because I, I look around and I just don't see as many oaks and sycamores as I would like to see. I, I see that there is a city engineer position open. And I'm wondering if expertise in urban forestry will be a priority in the selection process for that person? I would love to see a new hire who knows trees and values them and who will support sort of urban forest friendly practices. And then another idea I have is that a lot of cities with really robust urban forests like Sacramento or Davis, they partner with tree foundations, which help educate people on how to select site and care for trees in town so that you end up with the right trees in the right places and they don't have to be cut down. These tree, these organizations also advise the city on tree friendly policy. I feel like Livermore needs this. And I'm interested in starting a tree foundation here. There's grant funding available for this person and I've already reached out to SAC Tree Foundation to learn more about how they do what they do. And I'm wondering if the council would welcome help from an organization like this. And my last thought is, well, my second to last thought is that my neighborhood lost another tree last week, which is what inspired this. I have no idea if the tree removal was permitted or not, but a new neighbor and immediately cut down a large mulberry tree.
Okay, Ms. Adams, Ms. Adams. Thank you. I certainly appreciate your comments. As I said, we can't deliberate, but, but we, we're big on trees. There's a project that's going to be deliberated tonight, which has a lot of trees. One of the interesting things about Livermore is that Livermore doesn't do parks. And most cities do their parks. So when you have the trees in parks, we have a separate elected agency called the Livermore Area Recreation and Park District. So they're the ones that do the parks like Sycamore Grove Park and a lot of the other things that you would think, but, but we'll bring this back for further consideration. Trust me. Next, on the, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand. Okay, it looks like we have Nancy. Unmute yourself, Nancy. Nancy, unmute yourself.
There we go, sorry. And we have, I have one hand working, my other one is in a cast.
Okay.
I'm a long time Livermore resident. My name is Nancy Redry. I volunteer with Friends of Tesla Park and, which is working to preserve the biologically diverse and culturally significant Tesla Park land that is just east of the city. In fact, you can see it from City Hall, the beginning of it. For the past several years, the city of Livermore has been a really strong advocate for Tesla preservation, including writing letters to the legislature and state officials. And we thank you very much for your longstanding support of this important local conservation effort. Consistent with your private prior letters, we would like to request that the city write another general letter of support to the governor and secretary Crowfoot of the California Natural Resources Agency, urging that they take administrative action to redesignate Tesla as a nature and cultural preserve. We also request that the city be able to participate in meetings at the state level with other local agencies and groups to represent the city's position as expressed in its various letters to state officials. Thank you for your time.
Right, thank you, Nancy. Okay. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on the citizens forum? Items that are not on the agenda? I see no other, oh, I see Brittany Kick has raised her hand.
Hi, this is Brittany Kick. I just wanted to thank the camp asset management program. I gave a suggestion that maybe there should be some special treats for kids at the end of their GEO cash. And they immediately added some stickers and crayons, which makes a three and six year old very happy at the end of a treasure hunt. There being no actual treasure, they were confused the first time. But it's a really great program and I want to urge anybody listening to participate in the GEO cash program to learn about all of our assets. And if you have little ones, know that there will be a special little prize at the end.
Listen to the more our asset hound. Okay, I see no further hands raised, so I'm going to close the citizens forum.
Excuse me, mayor?
Yes. Oh, was it on YouTube?
We have some on the Zoom Q and A. We won't be taking comments over YouTube tonight.
Okay, all right.
City Clerk's office, please read the comments received over Zoom Q and A.
This one is from Jackie Cota, citizens forum and public comment. Right now, the country is being torn apart by the biggest political hoax and coordinated mass media disinformation campaign in living history. You know it as COVID-19. In 2015, directed by the global criminal corruption network known as the deep state, President Barack Hussein Obama authorized millions of, in funding for the Wuhan Institute of Virology, the location to be the epicenter of the COVID-19 outbreak. The research carried out here provided the agent for a global biological attack on a scale never seen before, never seen. One that would be timed for release within an election year, starting the very day unsubstantiated efforts to impeach President Trump fell apart. With their base on operations in the democratic establishment, the deep state shadow corporation embarked on a coordinated irregular warfare insurgency with multiple aims, all under cover of a global pandemic they themselves manufactured for this purpose. Enabled by their own and controlled corporate media monopoly, they instigated a heavy-handed and unjustifiable nationwide shutdown to reverse Trump's many economic and unemployment gains, with Democrat-controlled states suffering the harshest restrictions in the country. Trump's energetic rallies were halted, riding, hiding from a view of surging nationwide passion for his galvanizing message while Democratic presidential frontrunner Joe Biden was able to avoid interviews and debates or the emerging Ukrainian bribery scandal that earned his family millions of illicit kickbacks by abusing his office. The next major advantage of the pandemic was for the deep state was the case made to the public for mail-in voting, a highly insecure practice proven rampant with fraud, with a rapidly rising death toll needed to make the case for a public for even harsher control. Normal influenza deaths for the year were recorded as COVID-19 artificially inflating the numbers. When this did not yield enough fatalities, the deep state then initiated a murderous plan to defy federal guidelines and move infected patients into nursing homes where the high-risk age group excuse me, could be found in large numbers. Crop governor New York, New Jersey, California, Pennsylvania and Missouri oversaw genocide of our elderly. Even as quickly as constructed field hospitals and medically equipped Navy ships stood most empty. This horrendous act cost the lives of over 50,000 people, but gave the insurgency a death toll that would stoke the public fear needed to push ahead with their goals. In these dark times, when people have little else but comfort of community church was banned across the country under the guise of public safety. Depression and loneliness became the new epidemic, all designed to create the social conditions needed for what was to come next on the desperate plan to fracture the nation to hold on to power immediately under reports of flattening the curve mortality rates. The narrative changed to new cases utilizing PCR testing process that was never designed to test for COVID-19. This city council is brought into the entire charade, doing zero personal research in support of the community. And the remainder of the comment will be available in the public record. The next public comment is from Cara Wenti. Open forum. Thank you to the city council and staff for all that you do to make our home the best place it can be. And let me just double check. And that concludes the comments over Zoom.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. With that, I am going to close the public comment period. And all right, now on to the consent calendar. These are items that are typically of routine nature. The, and they usually passed with a single motion. Does anyone wish to discuss or pull any of the consent calendar items for, for discussion? Or is there any public comment on any of those? Anyone in the council? I don't see anyone wishing to, oh, Councilmember Carling.
Yes, thanks. I just wanted to thank the staff for, on 4.08. This is the bike lane improvements on First Street, which was brought to council a few, couple of meetings ago. There was, I expressed some interest in thinking more about how we might stripe a couple of intersections there. And I appreciate the, the effort that staff made to contact Bike East Bay and get their input as well as other stakeholders. So again, I just wanted to say that I appreciate the time and the energy they put into that to address some of the concerns I had. So thank you very much.
Very, very good. Thank you. Councilmember Monroe.
That was also on my list to call out for something that was exceptionally exciting for the city. I also wanted to call out 4.10, just noting that this is a step in the, as we move forward in the advance housing development, 44 units of affordable accessible housing for persons with developmental disabilities. Studios, one bedroom units. And this is something that we in Livermore should be doing and we are doing it. And it's just nice to see that. And then I also wanted to call out 4.17, that we're getting a mural at the La Botica, a tequila bar. And it's a very attractive mural that you can look and find on the, on the website, on the agenda. So.
I think that large magenta octopus is what you see after drinking too much tequila.
That's what you get before the tequila. Imagine what, after the tequila, it's moving its tentacles.
Instead of the worm in the tequila, there's an octopus, right?
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Very good. Okay, that's the only, all the comments that I see. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on the consent calendar? I'm looking at Q and A. Don't see it. Okay, I'd be willing to entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Monroe, seconded by Councilmember Carling. Any discussion on the motion? All, roll call, roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Bye.
Councilmember Coomer.
Bye.
Councilmember Carling.
Bye.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Bye.
Mayor Marshawn.
Bye. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to the public hearings, 5.01. This is the hearing to consider the development of 186 townhome units on two vacant parcels totaling approximately 35 acres from low intensity industrial service commercial and then to urban, medium, high residential and open space. So if you have the staff report, please.
Honorable mayor, good evening. This is Mark Roberts, your city manager. And this evening, Andy Ross, our senior planner, who's the project manager for this item, will be giving us our staff report.
Thank you very much. Can everyone see my screen okay?
Yes.
So, good evening, mayor and members of the city council. As you just stated, tonight's item is a proposed amendment to the general plan and zoning map for the development of 186 townhomes located in the Springtown area north of 580. So the site is located within the city limits and the urban growth boundary near the area known as Springtown, approximately two and a half miles from downtown Livermore. If we zoom into the site, the site is approximately 35 acres. It's accessed via Lassen Road from Springtown Boulevard. It's near the former Springtown Golf Course, commercial uses and nearby residential neighborhoods. The, it's adjacent to 580 along the southern boundary of the site. And the northern and western portions of the site are higher elevations with hilltops and saddles and changing topography. And a portion of the Arroyo Seco flows through the southwestern portion of the site. The site is currently known as the Springtown Business Park and it's designated with low intensity industrial, which envisions industrial, light industrial uses, research and development and administrative office uses. It's also designated for limited, as limited agriculture, which allows grazing and rural uses. And a small portion of the project site here is designated as service commercial, which permits auto-oriented service uses or home wholesale home improvement uses. The applicant is proposing to designate 12 acres of the site to urban high residential or UH3 and designate the remaining portion of the site as open space. The UH3 designation establishes a density range of 14 to 18 dwelling units per acre, which would achieve the proposed 186 dwelling units within that envelope. This designation accommodates attached housing types, including townhomes, generally located in areas with adequate infrastructure, public services and amenities to support these densities. An open space designation would be applied to the remaining 23 acres of the site, portions of which would be made available for non-motorized public use. This designation would be consistent with the general plan goals and policies to protect the open space and scene values, as well as provide a range of housing types to address the diverse needs of Livermore residents in a manner that is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood context. The current zoning for the site is planning and development zoning, which permits light industrial wholesale and office uses. The applicant is proposing a planned development residential district that would respond to the physical characteristics of the site and limit permitted uses to townhomes and related ancillary uses such as in-home childcare and home occupations. The proposed planned development standards respond to the physical attributes of the site by clustering the residential uses into the southern and eastern portions of the site to take advantage of the topography that will be enhanced with landscape berms and to take advantage of its proximity to services. The development standards are prescribed unique setback and height requirements and limit future expansion of the townhomes. The Livermore Development Code requires that planned residential districts provide a design feature in exchange for variation from conventional zoning regulations. The Development Code considers the reservation of open space and the development of pedestrian and bicycle trails above what is required by the general plan as an adequate design feature. The general plan and planned development designate open space portions of the site approximately 23 area, 23 acres, excuse me. The track map will further secure this area with an open space easement, which would limit development, but allow for landscape and agricultural maintenance and non-motorized public access. So if we look at the development proposal, there are 33 lots clustered in this 12 acre envelope. They're accessed from Lassen Road, which is a public street and transitions into a private street network. The track map for the project demonstrates the location and provisions of public utilities, lighting and stormwater treatment. The site plan includes a network of trails and pathways that meander through the open space, as well as a segment of a regionally significant trail, T6, which connects to Lassen Road right of way at this point, parallels the north side of Street A, crosses Street A and continues on into the open space and beyond. The townhomes themselves are to, range from two to three stories and range from 1,200 to 1,900 square feet and are located in a variety of threeplexes up to a sevenplex buildings. The project includes transportation impact analysis, which assessed trip generation of the new development and evaluated potential impact on six intersections within the project vicinity shown here. In summary, the project will generate a total of 1,139 daily trips on average and approximately 100 daily PM trip, PM peak trips and 87 AM peak trips. This assessment found that this increase was, is not significant, would not significantly impact the roadway capacity or create significant additional intersection delay based on general plan standards. If we look specifically at the Springtown and Blue Bell intersection, intersection three is shown on this map. This slide will illustrate the average delay at this intersection. On the left side of this graph is the delay in seconds. On the right column, that demonstrates the thresholds of the levels of significance. And the three sets of blue and orange bars represent the average AM and PM peak delay for the existing conditions, the proposed townhome project and a potential development under the current industrial zoning. So the data concludes that each scenario is within the acceptable level of service and that each remain relatively unchanged. So under the existing conditions, the level of service is A and B respectively. And the average second delay is about 10 seconds in the AM and 20 seconds in the PM. Under the project, the level of service would change slightly to B and C, but still within the minimum allowable range. And if we look at the projected seconds of delay, the increase is estimated at three seconds on average in the AM and two seconds on average in the PM. And this is similar levels of service and delay under the industrial project scenario as well. However, when we were evaluating the proposed project with the type of industrial use that we've permitted under the current zoning, the total number of trips is much greater. The total trips shown here would be nearly three times as what is proposed in the townhome conditions. It should be noted that these trips would also be likely truck trips that would support the industrial use and would occur throughout the day. So in addition to that analysis, your staff looked at Springtown Boulevard and Blue Bell. through time lapse photography. So this is the PMP traffic representing typical traffic flows. So on the far, we're looking at Springtown Boulevard, south at the Blue Bell intersection. So on the far right lane on the left hand of your screen, this represents high volume, almost all the trips, vehicle trips turn right onto Blue Bell. Occasionally, there's a backup. And there's some stacking, but for the most part, it keeps moving. In the number one lane, right here, that's the number of that would be the direction in which cars are traveling to the project site. So the majority of traffic is going right onto Blue Bell, but the traffic would keep traffic moving straight onto Springtown. And so there shouldn't be a significant delay or impact. It's also worth noting that your staff's been looking at this area and have been working on transportation improvements within this vicinity to ensure that the system is functioning effectively. A recent roadway improvement project includes bicycle and pedestrian improvements. This includes installing buffered bike lanes and that conflict green paint that would increase visibility for cyclists. And so the diagram on the left is Springtown Boulevard. It's aligning north to south. This is the on-ramp off-ramp from 580 going north onto Springtown. The conflict painting is shown here in these gray boxes and there's a painted buffer for bicycles. And again, on this side of the street, there is a buffered lane, conflict painting, striping and additional buffer. Again, that green paint. So this is a first step towards increasing comfort for cyclists and pedestrians in Springtown, and eventually it will continue on to First Street. This is just a photograph of on the ground conditions. We can see the the green paint indicating the conflict zones. So additionally, staff's been implementing improvements to the signal timing and the synchronization through this complex of intersections to improve traffic flow. This includes improved left turn movements from Blue Bell on the Springtown at intersection three and which is a heavy AM movement. Staff is further investigating other short to midterm improvements in the area such as a right turn arrow on Springtown Boulevard onto Blue Bell, which, as the video showed, is a heavy right turn movement in the PM. This would be done in order to keep traffic flowing through the intersection at that time. And the long term, we're studying the reconstruction and redesign of the First Street overpass. So that was a summary of the short and midterm improvements that staff's investigated in the area. But back to the townhome project as part of our normal application review process, city staff engages with the school district. And based on the district's assessment of the project, the total estimated number of new students would be approximately 84. That would be estimated breakdown of 35 elementary school students, 20 middle school students, and 29 high school students. Based on the project location, students will be given the choice between Croce, Altamont Creek, and Lawrence Elementary Schools. And students would be assigned to Christensen Middle and Livermore High School. Based upon the current enrollment and projection for the next several years, the district finds that they have enough space to accommodate the additional students. Your planning commission voted to approve the project, recommended approval of the project. However, they did have questions regarding secondary and emergency access to the site. Just to orient us, again, this is Lassen Road here, and then this is the private street network. The site plan is designed to allow for emergency vehicle access and circulation and does provide proper turning radio for emergency vehicles as depicted in this diagram. Also, the fire code allows for a single point of access for developments less than 200 dwelling units with an NFPA 13 fire sprinkler rating. The project is 186 units and it is designed with those types of sprinklers. The systems, the sprinkler system differs from those found in single family detached homes. They provide total property coverage rather than the minimum needed for life safety. And this is to prevent spread of fire to surrounding attached units. In addition, the surrounding grasslands as a fuel type does not pose as high of a risk as other heavily woodland areas or scrub environments. And that coupled with fire breaks in the form of roadways and trails and other irrigated landscape areas buffers the project from severity of grassland fires. Finally, the planning commission suggested the use of the regional trail as a potential emergency evacuation route or emergency vehicle access route. So again, that trail aligns along Lake, sorry, Street A and crosses through the open space. However, west of the site is likely an origin of a grassland fire and evacuation routes typically should not be designed to direct people towards a potential hazard. So when we looked at all these things combined, the 186 units and the sprinkler rating and the fuel loads, the fire, the project complies with the fire code and the single point of access is adequate. Due to the proximity of the site to I-580, the project is subject to the general plan scenic corridor policies. And there are two kinds, grading as well as views. Scenic core grading policies state that new development should limit the percentage of grading or alteration in the areas of 10 to 15% slope and that most alterations should be limited to areas of the lowest lying 10% slope. So this is a very colorful graph. So just to orient us, this is Lassen Road over here. And the project site is depicted here. You can see the track and the street network. The diagram shows the slope analysis for the site. So the areas in green represent areas with 10% slopes. The yellows and reds are those areas above 10%. And so what the diagram is showing us is that the majority of the grading activities for the development, including streets and the landscape berms, is within that 10% range. It also generally fits within the areas that are already designated for industrial development. And grading above the 10% is within the limits set forth in the general plan. So regarding the view analysis, the site is in subarea three, so part four of the general plan scenic corridor, which designates a prescribed view angle. So development is limited to lowest lying 10% slope in the southeastern portion of the site, which is generally this area. And development on other areas of up to 10% slope shall not be visible from the freeway. And visibility of the development shall be measured as shown on this diagram. So from at this point, looking at this angle, development should not be seen and so on. So this area shows the proposed knoll or berm at this location. And in this diagram, this is the proposed housing that would be positioned in the natural saddle between two hillsides and screened with enhanced landscape berms. So the site plan, again, clusters these buildings to the southeast quarter and between the saddles of the hillsides. And the location takes advantage of the contours of the site along with enhanced landscape berms. So these berms are added to the general area and further screen views from 580. Additionally, townhomes in this location shown here are limited to two stories in order to prevent rooftops from peeking out over the ridge lines and causing a silhouette effect. So here are some visual representations of the project in compliance with the scenic corridor. So this is view angle B1. If you that corresponds to this line here. And so as we move forward, this is B2 and B3, which would be this line here and here. So you can see the townhomes are they exist, but they're behind this ridge line and the vineyards in the foreground. This is not part of the scenic core view angle, but it is a realistic view if when we're driving eastbound on 580 and looked at a 90 degree angle, this is potentially what we would see. So if we look at all these together in a visual simulation, the applicant provided animation to show this thing in context. So we're driving eastbound and we're going under the Los Colinas Overpass. And you can start to see overhead the view angles as set forth in the in the scenic corridor qualities, policies of the general plan. So we're just entering the project site now. This is the Arroyo Seco in the foreground. Here's some of the hillsides and the birmingham with the vineyards in the foreground and some of the oaks to be planted. Again, some Birmingham and some oaks. Townhomes are right here behind that. And now we're past the project site and coming up under the First Street overpass. So in addition, there is a visual animation from the westbound direction, which is not part of the scenic corridor, but for context, we're driving westbound on 580. We're coming up upon the First Street overpass. Here's the off-ramp onto Springtown Boulevard going north. We're coming under the First Street overpass. If we look to our right, we can start to see some of the townhomes screened behind the Caltrans landscaping. And then they subtly disappear behind some of the Birmingham and the vineyards. There's still townhomes to our right, but at this point, we're past them and this is the open space area. So if we go back to the site plan, again, the buildings are clustered into this development envelope and are positioned to interface with the streets and the sales and alleyways and each other. They're designed in a farmhouse style adapted to the townhome product type with different variations. And this map shows is color coded to show those variations that are distributed throughout the site to avoid repetition. Here is an example of a two-story townhome product type. You can see the roof form breaks up the massing, there's articulation used to distinguish the units from each other with recesses and porches in order to create that human scale. And similarly, an example of the three-story product type, again, different roof forms to break up the massing articulation, use of porches and window treatments to again, give it that human scale. In addition to the entitlements we just discussed, the project includes a development agreement. And this agreement would secure terms and timing for offsite improvements as identified in the city's master plans. The proposed projects would be considered amenities and have public importance that justify the variation from traditional zoning standards and the civil plan development district. So one of those improvements is a reconstruction of the spring towns who are trunk line shown here in yellow for the public health and safety and the conveyance and treatment of wastewater. In addition, as we mentioned, Trail T6 in the active transportation plan, the project would construct the trail Long Street A through the open space and then continue offsite through a neighboring property where it would connect with the main spur that would connect to Redwood Road, cross Arroyo Seco, eventually take one to Los Colinas Overpass where there'd be comfortable crossing over the freeway and it would connect to the existing trail network. And finally, Springtown Boulevard median improvements. And so a little bit more about that, there's a current median within Springtown Boulevard. It's about 400 feet long and eight feet wide. And so this is looking at it facing north towards Blue Bell intersection. And staff is recommending and the applicant has agreed to add street trees to this median in order to improve the overall aesthetic of this gateway into Springtown. And the improvements will narrow the line of sight for cars that will calm traffic in addition to approving the overall visual appearance of Springtown Boulevard. And so this is same median looking the other direction. We're looking southbound now and Blue Bell is behind us. And the proposed landscaping again contributes to the aesthetic of the street branching over the travel lanes casting shade and shadow. So in summary, the project would support and achieve many of the city's goals, including the city's broader housing goals. It also includes provisions for affordable housing. 28 affordable units would be required by our inclusionary ordinance. The project proposes to build 14 of these on site and pay in lieu for the other 14, which was preauthorized previously by the city council. And this will provide for some additional affordable housing units now, but also contribute to the housing trust fund for use later. In addition, it broadly conforms to the city's climate goals. It'll increase the urban forest. The project is proposing approximately 1,000 trees and this helps contribute to carbon sequestration. In addition, all the units will be built with rooftop solar. Again, the project provides open space, an agrarian themed landscape that surrounds the neighborhood that would be publicly accessible with a trail system and not just accessible to the neighborhood, but to the public in general. And it would also, the project would also generate $1.4 million in transfer development credit funds that the city could use to acquire open space elsewhere. And then finally, again, secures terms and timings for offsite public improvements, including a sewer main replacement, trail gap closure that would improve access across I-580 and entryway improvements along Springtown Boulevard. And so with that, planning commission and staff are recommending the city council take the following actions to authorize the future development of 186 townhomes on the project site. Adopting a resolution that would adopt the last road townhome and a project initial study mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program pursuant to SEQA. Adopt a resolution that would approve the general plan amendment, the vesting tentative tract map and the site plan design review application. Introduce an ordinance that would adopt the zoning map amendment and establish a planned development for the site and also introduce an ordinance that would authorize execution of the development agreement. So that's to conclude staff's presentation. Mr. Adam Tennant from Westgate Ventures, the applicant has a brief presentation, after which he and I are available for any questions you may have. So I will queue up Mr. Tennant's presenting.
Good evening. This is Adam Tennant with Westgate Ventures. Just want to make sure everybody can hear me.
Yes, we could hear you.
Great. Thank you very much. Mayor Marchand and council members, my name's Adam Tennant. I'm principal with Westgate. And I want to thank first of all, staff for the presentation, Andy, very thorough on that. So I'll try to do my best not to be repetitive with a lot of what staff has already presented. I am here with my consultant team noted on the on the slide. Can you go to the next slide, please? Great. Thank you very much. So my consultant team you see listed there below and hopefully we'll be able to answer any questions that you might have tonight. Also, I will be presenting along with David Burton from KTGY Architecture and David Gates from Gates and Associates. So they'll be a part of this presentation. So just as a heads up for the hands up function that that city has. So from from partner standpoint, we are partners with and representing the longtime property owners, the Ferraris and the Schmidigs. They've owned the property for over 40 years, had previously marketed the site for many years as an industrial property. And you might have remembered the old sign that was long 580 that was up for years. They're interested in developing the site. We formed a partnership with the hopes of proposing a community that would be compatible with the existing fabric of the surrounding neighborhood, while also removing an inactive blighted area from Springtown. And as some of you might know who have visited the site right now, that terminus is really an area of neglect. Garbage accumulates, cars hang out, etc. So we like to bring eyes to the neighborhood with our proposal. And also emphasizing publicly accessible open space and providing extensive agricultural and orchard theme in some of which Andy has spoken about and some of which David Gates will be talking about in more detail as we go along. Next slide, please. Thank you. So a couple notes here, one, and once you know, I'll be careful not to be overly redundant. We are within the city of Livermore's urban growth boundary. Our site is within that important sensitive boundary and obviously development options are are limited because of the policy and we have right here is a is a very good infill proposal for you. We're hopeful. It is an infill community surrounded by development and entitled land. It's really filling that last quadrant of the Springtown First Street 580 interchange. And one thing that doesn't also show here is to our north of the site is also an approved, the approved Catholic high school site. Yeah, thank you very much. So you see how Spring Valley Commons, in fact, kind of wraps around us to the north. You have the You have the Target Shopping Center directly across the freeway from us and the industrial uses on the southeast quadrant. And then you have the Springtown retail and the old golf course on that northeast quadrant. So we'd really like to feel that we're kind of that final piece of, of the area. As Andy pointed out, one of our big goals is to increase publicly accessible usable open space. You know, currently the site is fenced off and inaccessible. We're proposing easily accessible public access and active enjoyment of our property. And as we'll talk about more and beyond, we help alleviate a housing shortage with both market rate attainable housing and also the construction of onsite affordable housing. I think we'd all agree, we're in a housing crisis on both a local and regional basis. And I think providing actual onsite units for a part of our below market rate program, I will see as a, as hopefully seen as a strong amenity. From a target buyer, you know, as you know, I've been attending, we've been involved in the property for six years, attended a lot of meetings through the years and see that young residents have come back really with no place to go and really struggling with expensive options on the housing front. So those are the, those are the families and couples we want. And we want to invigorate the local retailers of the community. You know, there's an old saying of retailers follow rooftops. So we're hopeful that we will be helpful to those, to those businesses. And as staff has talked about, we're implementing an offsite community trail, which implements the city's vision and its active transportation plan. So those are what we see as some of the introduction and some of the benefits. Next slide, please. Thank you. So as I mentioned, we're working with staff for six years and you know, Andy Ross, Steve Riley, Paul Spence amongst the other, Steve Stewart, everybody's been very helpful. It's been a very iterative process, lots of land plan revisions, responses and clarifications through the years. But I think where we've come is something we can hopefully all support. What you see on this slide is really where we started, a little bit of where we were before I get to the where we are. And we really had a developmental footprint that resembled the low intensity industrial pods that staff shown on one of those previous slides. So we had development going to the far northwestern portion of the site. But what we did is we pursued a more compact development through our dialogue with staff. We understood the sensitivity of 580, both, you know, from a visual standpoint. We also wanted to be careful also with the Arroyo and be, make sure we exercise biological avoidance. So we got rid of that northwest corner and started moving stuff towards the, towards the eastern side. Next slide, please. Which led to then this slide. And as you can see, if you can imagine the site that staff had shown earlier, we had homes on the southern region of the site, which were within the allowable area. They were in that green 10% area that staff showed. We had homes down at the bottom of the site. And in, as we were working with staff on that area, we were also having conversations with the fire department on access, circulation, sprinklers, some of the things that staff mentioned earlier. And after going down kind of concurrent paths, we decided to make more revisions and push even more to the east to really come with a more clustered development that is encouraged by city policies. And maybe most importantly, we were really just trying to minimize the amount of frontage along 580. Whether it met scenic corridor or not, we wanted to minimize that. And I think that was of very strong interest to staff. And we wanted to get rid of that perception of a wall of homes. As you see on this slide, the homes backing up to 580, they admittedly do kind of just line up in a row. And we wanted to fix that, fix that condition. And we then reduced the footprint. We since relative to the existing general plan, we are proposing two less developable acres on our site. So instead of the 14 acres of developable light, low intensity industrial and commercial service, we are proposing 12 acres of development. Next slide, please. So this is the slide that staff has shown before, and this is what we formally submitted back in March of 2018. So along with this came all of our technical studies, traffic, biotics, acoustic, cultural resources, air quality, all those really from the beginning, we wanted the public to benefit and have access to this theming and the trails that we were bringing to the greater community. And so that was, with that was an extensive landscape plan, ag theming, really a couple of other design goals we were trying to do, as I mentioned here. Going back to earlier hearings, in hearing city councils loud and clear at the city of Livermore was really trying to stay away from having sound walls on our site. And that's something that we have been able to accomplish. And as I mentioned before, another one of our goals is really just to stay away from the Arroyo. So and take care of that sensitive habitat or potential habitat in that area. So I will come back in a little bit more to talk about some other items, but David Gates is going to talk a little bit more on our community plan highlights, really emphasizing the features of our landscape plan. Next slide.
David?
I'm here.
All right, let it rip.
We have the, is that the next image? It'll be the same, but I just want to be on the right sequence. Anyway, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Sorry to see you retiring. What I'd like to do is just explain the landscape concept that this image represents. And I think there are three major takeaways or goals we're after here. One is to create an appropriate visual character. Because of the site's location and proximity to Interstate 580, it's a major gateway corridor, highly visible, as you've seen from the presentation. Secondly, we'd like a strong sense of community here. So it's not just an aggregation of units, but it's a village to live with social patterns and outdoor character and events that are, make it a special place. And thirdly, the environmental and landscape fit. Sitting next to a freeway with noise and, and air that we might want to treat a little bit. In fact, there's a riparian corridor on site. So those are the three main takeaways. And so how did we achieve that? And what you're seeing on this image is what I would call land sculpting. We didn't want the visibility of the units and we wanted to create this gateway that would be the essence of Livermore, which in our mind is golden hills, soft topography, oak woodlands, elements that sort of surround the community. And so our goal was to recreate that in a way, not using berms, you know, which sort of imply a mouse under a rug, but really sculpting the land so that when it's redone, you don't see the architecture and you do see the beautiful sinuous shapes of the topography that are out there now. You also see, and I'll, I'll have a few more images to explain it, but they're, they're connecting devices, promenades and paseos that connect different parts. We have kind of a town square down in the lower middle. We have outdoor gardens, we have orchards, we have vineyards. We have trails that take you offsite and we have a lot of loop, loop trails that keep you onsite and link you throughout the grounds. So the next image will show you some of those components. And this is just briefly stated, but you can see that sort of kidney bean at the base. That is reshaped topography to create the invisibility, if you will. And we actually raised the berm off to the left as well. And all of that is geared to the views from the road, mostly as you're moving east. You see that red dash line, that is a promenade or spine that it is for pedestrians to walk so that people can come together. Those three red dots are the major destinations where people will gather. Each one has a slightly different character. And those orange arrows are paseos so that you can walk from unit to unit, from place to place. And the upper right, you see the orchard area that really is a series of vegetation types that people can pick fruit from trees and different elements to sort of add more activities. So you can see the open space numbers, 23 acres of open space and the promenade and the connectors. So the next image then shows you some of the specific character of these things. This is more of a town square to us that there's some topography from the entry road down. So we have some stepped walls that we're using as an amphitheater. That orange area is a nice play area with play equipment that's themed on the agrarian character of the entire site. The grid there is a plaza, so it's for different events to gather and for the adults, you know, to watch the kids and, and create other lively things to do. So the next image then looks at some of those other destinations on the site. Next thing, yeah, there you go. This is what we'd call the orchard walk. So we're coming up from the main point of entry here. And it's a series of fruit trees, a variety of species and apples and cherries and apricots. And as you wind your way up the topography to the upper group of units, you'll be walking through an orchard. And we have a series of little nodes or destinations, little benches to sit there. Nice views when you're up above, looking over the, the units there, looking across to the south and, and seeing some nice distant views. Next image then sort of is the other destination on the west end of the site. So you're seeing in the upper right corner, raised vegetable gardens. The entire theme here is really farm to fork, if you will, in a gentle way. We want the landscaping to be something that you participate with, not just a suburban plantings of shrubs and ground covers, but something that's evocative of the community and useful to folks using it. So as you come out of that raised vegetable garden, social sitting area, you come down to the regional trail, where there's another little group gathering area and that brown trail takes you off to many places in the surrounding areas. Here you also see the, the plant which wrapping the vineyard is really two and maybe three species of oaks. You know, so it'll look like the surrounding hillsides that are out there now. And you see the, there's a olive orchard grid to the base of the promenade to the lower part of this drawing. So the next image is, you know, and happy to answer questions because this is brief, but the next image is just give you the character, the feel we'd like. We, we think this is the essence of, of Livermore. We'd like to have a rather contemporary feel to some of the landscapes. So it's sort of what I would call looking forward to the past. You know, Livermore has a great history to it and also has laboratories that are looking into our future. So for me, there's a, there's a nice magic mix of old and new here. And, and we would like this agrarian feeling to set that tone. And I think that's my last image. I think it's time to bring Adam back to summarize other aspects of this.
Great, thanks, David. Yeah, so just wanted to touch, touch a little bit about kind of the theme of compatibility with, with the surrounding community. And I think from a land use is noted, we have the same land use designation, that of urban high as we have with our, the adjacent residential community, the Spring Valley Commons community. It's worth noting also, we're removing the only low intensity industrial property north of 580 in the entire city. So I think what we're proposing from a land use standpoint provides that compatibility. Also, I make note of the setbacks to the Spring Valley community. As you can see on the, kind of the northeast portion of our community, we're about 150 feet away from our property line and about 250 to the, to the nearest home. So we have generous setbacks and we've really tried to highlight that area also with additional plantings. And then the other thing to note from a land planting standpoint is the homes. I mentioned before, having the home side rather than kind of back up. And you can see that orientation relative to our neighbors up at Spring Valley Common, where we're having the, those three buildings side to it rather than having a, a row of homes literally backing up. And also in that orchard area, we're proposing no lighting in that area. And that was done in response to my first meeting with the adjacent properties HOA management company. And by the way, I appreciated a nice letter of support that we did receive from that, from John Clegney of the, from that management company. And we, but the goal was really to reduce the amount of glare coming onto our neighbors. So that orchard is really for, for daytime, for daytime use. Next slide, please. So, and this was touched on by staff a lot, obviously, and really appreciated all the, the detail. But from a big picture standpoint on the traffic counts, and this was noted in the staff report, our proposal use produces about 40% of the overall traffic trips relative to the existing land use designation. And as staff mentioned, it's also, we'd like to think of, once again, on compatibility, a better use of traffic, not having the, the big rig traffic that one would typically see with the industrial land use. And then as we've talked about, we do tie into existing infrastructure right at the site. It is a, it is the natural extension of the community. So I'm going to have David Burton talk from KTGY Architecture. And then I'm just going to summarize real quickly after David is done.
See, Adam, we're almost an hour into the presentation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know what, Mayor? I apologize for that. You know what, hey, David, let me, yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in. Let me just run through the slides real quick. This is just, the next three slides are really to show the interaction of the architecture with the theming. Next slide, please. And what you see on these three slides are the three different communities we're proposing along with their interaction with the social aspects. So this is our vineyard community. We just showed our Oak Trail community. And then next slide is our orchard community. And this is the area which it's just, this mimics the, the area I was just talking about with the orchard right as you come into the site. So we wanted to show that kind of livability and interaction from it. And then from a neighborhood outreach standpoint, really meetings with the Spring Valley Common, Commons HOA, individual conversations with community members. Also came to an agreement with Kinder Care on some fence height and tree species changes to meet their goals and extensive meetings with the Oakland Diocese, really working cooperatively to ensure that we could get that community trail linkage that staff mentioned in the, before. Next slide, please. That just provides some more detail of the aforementioned trail and the coordination that was needed. And then there's your highlights, a lot of which we've talked about. And I can leave it right there. And all of those have been discussed, but that's what we'd like to think we're providing an asset to the Livermore community. And as mentioned before, our team's happy to answer any questions that, that you have.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, are there any questions from the council at this point? Councilman Monroe?
Right, so I, the question, and I know this was addressed by staff with great detail and I really appreciate it, but I want to make sure that it's really clear. The traffic situation sounds like whatever problems we have right now exist as they are. This development will not impact those problem, those, those problems in, in more than a minor way. Would that be a correct statement?
That is correct.
Okay. So if we have problem, I'm going to go one more time, sorry. But if we have, if we want to fix what problems people in North Livermore Springtown have, that is a separate issue from what we're considering tonight.
Yes, that's, that was for context.
Right. Okay. No, I know, I understand. I'm just, I'm, I, I'm, what I'm hearing from people is this will make the traffic worse. This is, and therefore it feels like a conflation of the problem of the traffic with the development. And I'm just, I want to make sure that's crystal clear. So thank you.
Any other questions for the, for staff or for the applicants? Okay, I got a couple of questions. So who maintains the agriculture? You've got the fruit trees, the cherries and the like. So who's going to maintain the agriculture? Because one of the things I'm concerned about is on slide 17, you show the bunch grass and you show the orchards, you know, proximate to that. And the first thing I thought of was rats. So who's going to be maintaining all this agriculture and the fruit and the produce?
So the intent is to have the HOA pay for maintenance of the open space area.
Okay, so there, there will be an HOA that'll be doing that. And they'll, they'll hire that out.
Yep.
Okay. And just to reiterate again, to expand on what Councilmember Monroe said, that this area is already zoned light industrial. And under the development that they would be allowed as light industrial, the traffic comes in at about 3,000 truck trips a day. And according to your traffic studies, they're going to be roughly 1,000 cars per day, according to slide 12?
Yes.
So it's, it's less of a traffic impact by about a third.
Correct.
And it's cars versus big trucks, which are more, more onerous. Okay. And it's kind of interesting, did you guys work with Marion Adams? Did you guys tag team this early on? Because she was talking about the lack of oak trees. And on slide nine, it looked like there were about maybe 100 oak trees. The Coast Live Oak were on that. And then I see that there's going to be 1,000 trees altogether. So adding on to the urban forest, because that was her concern. Okay. That's all I've got for right now. So what I'm going to do is, there's no other questions. I'm going to open the public hearing. And let's see. Let me get over to attendees here. Okay, we have John Dollrimple. Mr. Dollrimple.
Hello.
Yes.
Mayor and council members, my name is John Dollrimple. I'm representing the over 500 members of Livermore Residents for Responsible Development. It was good to hear Adam speaking. We've been trying to meet with him for over a year, numerous emails, phone calls, and never had an opportunity to chat with him about some of the concerns we have about our projects coming to our, the community, that, you know, how they promote principles about equity and sustainability. I, I see he did outreach, but unfortunately, you know, our 500 families did not have that chance. I'm here to ask you not to approve the negative deck. We think it's important that all the development community play by the rules, that the law be followed. The, the, we have filed comments, we have an attorney speaking that clearly show that the threshold for negative deck has not been met. And, you know, we want to, you know, there's a lot, obviously, a lot about this project that is, is, could be, contribute positively to the community. We want to see good projects built. But we don't want to have, for example, you know, the air quality impacts that are not being mitigated, which are required to be mitigated for a negative deck. You know, impact, for example, the, the kids in the, in the, in the, in the school, the young children. There's, the air, the exposure to air contaminants is way over the threshold that's allowed. And there's no, there's not adequate mitigations. For construction workers, we have extremely high cancer rates. And it's not likely the local construction workers will be on this job because of the low road construction model that they do for the construction workforce, low wages, no apprentices. But, but for those construction workers who will be there, they're more likely to be exposed to cancerous materials from the construction emissions or because they're not being mitigated as, as required by law. So we're asking you not to approve the mitigated negative deck. This should go through a CEQA review. And just as other developers have had to, who, who don't meet the threshold. And we, though, you may be attracted to some of the features of this project. That shouldn't put you in a position of violating the law. And we don't want to be, and be put in the, in the position of, you know, taking actions to do that. We want to see this project built, but go right. And so send it back, have a full EIR done as it should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dollrimple. Tamara Royce.
Thank you. Hi, good evening, Mayor and council members. This is Tamara Royce. I'm here on behalf of Friends of Open Space and Vineyards tonight. We are in support of this project. I think this project shows what good planning can accomplish in our city. And what we're particularly pleased to see with this project is consideration of the urban growth boundary, consideration of open space, provision of vineyards, 23 acres. That's a significant amount of land that will be kept in open space in this project. We're also pleased about the trail connection. And I think, you know, I anticipate there will be other speakers tonight who will talk about, I guess, how hard it has been and how long it has been since this project has, or that this idea of getting a trail, the T6 trail over to, over 580, to avoid pedestrians and bicyclists from having to go over the First Street overpass. So I think the prospect of being able to do this is very, very exciting for the community and very overdue. So, you know, again, we are, we are in favor of this and hope you will approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Royce. William Mumbi. Mr. Mumbi, you're still on mute.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is William Mumbi from Adams Broadwell Law Firm, representing Livermore Residents for Responsible Development. Livermore Residents is an association of individuals and labor organizations whose members live, work, and raise their families in Livermore and Alameda County. They have an interest in enforcing environmental laws that require responsible development in their communities and ensure a safe living and working environment for their members. We urge the council not to approve the project tonight. The MND you are being asked to approve fails to comply with CEQA. The project is inconsistent with general plan policies designed to protect public health and the environment. The council should remand the project to staff to repair a full EIR before it can be considered for approval. We submitted new written comments today, which include reports from three highly qualified experts who conclude that the project continues to have significant unmitigated impacts on air quality, public health, construction noise, and biological resources that the MND fails to disclose and mitigate. The new information today's staff report does not correct these errors. In fact, the staff report includes new studies demonstrating impacts will be more severe than previously analyzed, still without adequate mitigation. For example, the MND failed to disclose that the project will result in significant noise impacts to adjacent residences and schools. The Kinder Care preschool is located just 60 feet from the acoustic center of construction that will last for 17 months on this project. The staff report includes a new noise study, which acknowledges that noise levels at the preschool exceed 75 decibels. Our noise consultant concluded that this will cause significant increases in noise levels by 16 to 25 decibels at the preschool. This amount exceeds Caltrans's definition of substantial noise increase, which is 12 decibels. This is a significant impact. The MND fails to disclose this impact and its mitigation measures are not adequate. The project also has significant unmitigated biological impacts. Both our consultant and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife provided substantial evidence demonstrating that the project construction may result in illegal take of threatened species, such as the California tiger salamander and the California red-legged frog. The staff report claims to adopt CDFW's mitigation recommendations, but actually removed the mitigation measures needed to be, that needed to be improved. The staff report also includes new information about the location of the project's trail network, which demonstrates that they will have more severe impacts than the MND analyzed. Under CEQA, an MND is improper and an EIR must be prepared whenever there is a fair argument based on substantial evidence that the project may have a significant impact. Our experts and CDFW have presented substantial evidence demonstrating the project has significant unmitigated impacts. We urge the council to remand the project to staff to address these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mumbi. Okay, that, I see no more hands raised. Do we have anything from Q and A from either Zoom or YouTube?
Hey, Mayor, we are not accepting comments over YouTube this evening, but we have received comments over Zoom. City Council Office?
Yes, we have received comments over Zoom. First comment, David Lund, public comment, item 5.01. Thank you, City of Livermore and Lassen Road developer for incorporating the long-awaited trail crossing of 580 into the Lassen Road project. Thank you, Vice Mayor Bob Warner, for encouraging city staff to approach this trail element of the active transportation plan with the intent of getting it completed. Sincerely, Dave Love, Lund, Livermore.
Thank you.
Next is Matt Chades. I'm Matt Chades, 28 years old. My family moved to Springtown back in 96 and loved it. Loved it so much that I bought a home not far from where I was raised. I want to see the city provide more housing for younger people. I support this project. Okay, next one, Laurie Souza. I have a comment regarding item 5.01. I support this proposal to build an agricultural-themed community in Springtown. I appreciate the 23 acres of open space preserved with this project. I also love the trail connection via Los Caslinas overpass. I endorse this project and respectfully hope the council will vote in, in favor of it. Next one is from Carl Wenti, item 5.01. My name is Carl Wenti and my family has been part of this town for more than 135 years. Housing continues to be a challenge for my generation. A study of this project leads to me to believe this project is good for our town and greater community by providing overpasses, bridges, better bike and walking trails, and more, most importantly, homes for our teacher and frontline workers. Just makes sense. Thanks for what you do. Next one is Evan Branning, 5.1. I want to speak in support of the project. The housing, open space improvements in the area make this an excellent project for the region. Thank you for the trail improvements included in the project. Drew Felker, the Lassen Housing Project seems like good use of land for Livermore. And Gregory Davis, public comment 5.01. Thank you, City of Livermore and Lassen Road developer for incorporating the long-awaited trail crossing of 580 into Lassen Road project. Thank you, Vice Mayor Bob Warner, for encouraging city staff to approach this trail element of the active transportation plan with the intent of getting it completed. Our letter of support is on page 864 of the attachment for item 5.01. And per our policy, we will read the second part, the second or the latest comment. It's from Anna, I'm going to spell it out, B E L A U S T E G U I. And affordable housing, what will a townhome cost? New home, two townhomes, HOA fees, lovely open space, orchards, all sounds very expensive. Again, traffic is a disaster and that is the reason enough not to approve this development. This is from Ellie Felker. I think this is a well-thought-out plan that will address our housing needs. I like the design and I appreciate the addition of rooftop solar. I am looking forward to exploring the trails and for the new open space that this project will provide. Next is from Lynn Naylor, ITV. Agenda item 5.01, Lassen Road Project, Innovation. Tri-Valley Leadership Group, ITV, is a network of business and community leaders working to advance the economic climate and quality of life in the California's Tri-Valley. The Tri-Valley Rising Report, published by the Bay Area Council Economic Institute, states that if we hope to continue to thrive in this region, we must produce more diverse housing stocks so that people of all income levels can afford to both live and work in the communities. ITV supports the proposed Lassen Road project and applauds its inclusion of affordable workforce housing. We are pleased the project also provides for 23 acres of open space. This project balances open space and housing needs and also completes an important cycling and pedestrian trail crossing. ITV appreciates the collaborative spirit in Livermore and in the entire Tri-Valley region as we come together to meet the housing needs of this growing innovated hub. Lynn Naylor, CEO, Innovation Tri-Valley Leadership Group. And this is from JJR. What daytime was the traffic analysis performed? The camera was at 8:00 PM, which is not a heavy time yet. There was a backup. Has there been a safety analysis for the trees in the median that looks dangerous branches and leaves on cars? And then... This is from Brittany Kick. This type of development will be fantastic for young families and first-time home buyers, which is what our community often affected by our housing crisis. And then Kyle Klein, agenda item 5.01, Lassen Road Project. I'm Kyle Klein. I was raised in Livermore and my family has lived here for over 50 years. I went to Livermore High and I love Livermore. I am 28 years old and I would like to see more housing for younger community. I work for the Park and Rec Department for the City of Pleasanton. My wife is a Livermore teacher and we hope, we have been looking for a house to buy. I want the T6 trail belt to provide a connection from Springtown to the rest of Livermore. I support this project and the community it will create. I hope that we can continue to encourage younger people to raise families here. Okay, next one is from Alexis Klein. I'm Lex Klein. I was raised in Livermore and my parents, grandparents, and cousins live here. I went to Granada High and currently teach in Livermore. I love Livermore. I am 28 years old and I want the city to provide more housing for younger people. My husband and I are looking for a house to raise and family and want it to be in Livermore community. I want the T6 trail belt to provide a connection from Springtown to the rest of Livermore. I would like to see this community built and more like it moving forward. I support this project. And let me just double check.
Okay.
And I believe that concludes the comments on Zoom. Yes.
Okay, is that it?
That concludes the comments over Zoom.
Okay, so with that, I see no more hands raised. So I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Any further questions at this point for either staff or for the applicant? I have a question. So they said that there were substantial revisions. Have substantial revisions been made that would require a new CEQA document?
No, there have not.
Okay, so we're comfortable with the, the environmental documentation. I know that there was a lot of outreach on this. I'm, I'm concerned at the comment from Mr. Dollrimple that there were 500 members of the, this Livermore Residents Association that were not part of the conversation. Were they excluded? It sounds like they made some efforts to talk with Mr. Tenant. Can you see what, what happened there? Mr. Tenant, I see you're... Mr. Tennant, I see your hand raised. Unmute yourself. There you go.
Yeah, um, you know, Mr. Dalrymple did reach out to to my company back in the end of two thousand and eighteen. And in that phone call, we mentioned at the time that we're not builders, we're advisors to the property owners and really not in a position to discuss some contractors and labor. And we didn't hear back for quite a while and thought that, you know, that the issue was somewhat of a moot point. And then we went on from that point forward and went through and spent monies putting together our community benefit to implement the city's vision for the transportation plan. We came before you in May of nineteen with the concurrent review of the GPA with our project and the DA and things of that sort. And there was no engagement from Mr. Dalrymple's group. And since that time, then when our environmental document was released for review, then I received the call from Mr. Dalrymple. And at that point, I received a letter from his law firm. And since that time, so that's been over a year. We've been addressing the impacts and our goal is to mitigate those very impacts that he is concerned about. And we've been spending a lot of time and effort to answer those concerns. And we are confident that we have and staff can elaborate more on some of those details. But we did have a conversation early on in the process and we thought we were had an understanding. And so. But we're very confident in the environmental reports and think we have a safe, a safe community for all workers to be a part. And that's the thing is we are, we're welcome to all partners, whether union or non-union, both have apprentices, both use local labor. And our goal has been to give everybody an opportunity to work on this project. And we think with that flexibility, we have a better chance of ensuring our commitment to provide that attainable market rate housing that we, that I talked about earlier.
One of these concerned me was when he spoke of hazards on the site. And first thing I thought about was, you know, Cal OSHA, because OSHA is very active to prevent active hazards on sites. So I was concerned about that disconnect. So, okay, but you have spoken with them early on in the process and that we're confident that our CEQA or that there have not been sufficient modifications that would require a new CEQA document. Okay, so very good. Councilmember Monroe.
Right, so I really hope I'm not going to get myself in trouble with our lawyer, but here we go. Jason, please let me know if I need to shut up. What I'm concerned about here is I'm looking at the at the complaint about the CEQA document from Mr. Dalrymple and from the groups that are effectively representing labor. I'm listening to what Mr. Tennant said. And what I'm seeing here is a discussion between labor and developers. And I really, really like this project a lot. I think there's been a huge amount of wonderful work that's gone into it. And I also really support making sure that labor has, that we are, enable labor to have fair wages. I'm very concerned that that conversation never took place. Mr. Tennant, I know that you and I talked and you told me that this is not what you do, but I don't know where, if I were in labor, I would go to ensure that I had the conversation so that I was part of the conversation. You know, so that I could be part of the conversation, not to necessarily get the job, but to actually have the conversation. And that conversation didn't take place. That concerns me. The other thing that concerns me is that we see every time a development comes up, there is a CEQA document filed of some kind. I'm getting very tired of tiger salamanders, very tired. And I like amphibians a lot. I like frogs, I like amphibians. I really like them a lot. I don't like to see them used as a cover for something else that's going on. And that's what feels like is going on right now. So, so that's, in addition, it wastes a hell of a lot of time and money on everybody's part. It could be better spent on, oh, say, making the community a better place. Lawyers are great, but how about we use them appropriately? So what I'd like, so, you know, this is, all of which is to say, I would really like to set a direction in this city and in general where we're talking to each other so that we don't have to have a document that comes forward because conversations didn't happen ahead of time. There's my piece. Jason, did I do okay?
Councilmember Monroe, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. Everything you said was fine and heartfelt. And I think you actually made some poignant observations, really some poignant observations about how CEQA is being used for a different motive.
Why, thank you, sir.
Okay, looking for any other Vice Mayor Warner.
I sort of have a process question. So we do see what's happened with the filing with, or the, you know, comments from the union attorneys with respect to CEQA. What's the process? So we have on our staff, city staff, has declared that we don't have a CEQA problem. And now they've declared we have. So what's, I asked the attorney or the staff, what's the next step through this process? What are we looking at?
So Vice Mayor Warner, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. I'll start off this conversation and I'll hand it over to Andy Ross and the city's consultants. The process is the city engaged a CEQA consultant to help them with the project, to analyze the project impacts and its impacts upon the environment and came to a conclusion with regard to the appropriate CEQA document for environmental review, that being the document before you today. The Adams-Broadwell Group and their clients have a difference of opinion. They think a more robust and comprehensive document is necessary. The city doesn't agree with that. The city's consultant is prepared today to explain where they came to and the reasons for their determinations, should you be so inclined. But I'll turn it over to Mr. Ross to see whether he can give you a synopsis of their conclusions or to call upon them to give a more detailed response. Andy?
Thank you, Jason. Yeah, so when we conducted our CEQA analysis, we compiled all the technical studies that Mr. Tennant referred to, traffic, biological, air quality. And based on those technical analyses, we determined that there were not significant and unavoidable impacts and any potential for impact could be avoided, minimized, or mitigated. And so we decided to go with a mitigated negative declaration, which is before you. So as Jason said, we have Grant Gruber for First Carbon Solutions. He could speak to any of the details of our findings if you'd like.
With regard to your question, Vice Mayor Warner, which is what is the next step? Staff believes you have a firm environmental document that you can base your decision on this evening. Should Adams-Broadwell or the client disagree, seeing something more is needed, that question would be resolved hopefully by court of law.
That's what I was asking. It was basically what we have is our staff, our consultant, and they've told us the basis for a decision here. We have people objecting. We go forward as council, then it flips over to courts. If the, if the objecting party continues to persist, that's what will happen.
That is correct. That is one of the options.
Okay.
Councilmember Carling.
Yes, thanks. I was following up on Vice Mayor's point. Just wanted to express the way that I approach this, having read the rather detailed letter that we received today from the law firm representing the union labor. I then spent a fair amount of time also reviewing the the report from the CEQA consultants. And I think the best that I can do is read both of those and try and understand to the extent that the information is available to me and make a decision as to which, which one I, I'm not sure I agree with necessarily, but which one I favor. And certainly I also talked to city staff to get their point of view. And I'm certainly satisfied that what the CEQA consultant and city staff have, the conclusion they've drawn is that we've done enough in terms of the EIR and so on, that I support the project. I think it's a great project. I would also like to commend the folks that have worked on this for the six years, apparently, that you've been at it, that you've made remarkable changes in terms of where you started and where we've ended up. And I think that's to your credit, both to working with the city staff and recognizing what what the need of the community is, as well as protecting the urban growth boundary, sidelines and so on. So, and the trees, and I think the mayor's right, he must be in cahoots with the woman that spoke earlier because I was, a thousand trees, that's pretty impressive. So I'm very supportive of the project and hope we can move forward. I think it's a great opportunity for young families and others that are looking for a place. The community looks like is going to be great, well-planned, and so on. So I'm supportive. Thank you.
Okay, I also like the agrarian aspect of it, you know, the trees, the trails, the farming component there, going back to the agrarian history of Livermore. There's a lot in here and certainly this project has evolved. It's a far cry from being a light industrial where you got big rigs going in all day long. So I think that this really does look that it could be a benefit for the community. So seeing no further comments, having a closed public hearing, Vice Mayor or Mayor-elect Warner?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to this that I think it's a well-designed project, has a lot of amenities, and it's good to see them be part of it. And I like the fact that there were several subparts of the project with different kinds of gathering sites. And so it looks really good. And then the, you know, it cares about the climate change. A lot of aspects here that I, you kind of wish that a lot of the rest of Livermore was designed as well, in my opinion. So the other thing I wanted to point out is a couple of people mentioned me in the T-six, but it's really Beth Wilson, who was the big proponent for T-six. And we, it was only when she brought it up to the council that I sort of encouraged staff to figure out how to make it happen. So I'm glad that we, the T-six is part of this too, because that's been a long time coming.
Well, I saw the comment from David Lund. And David Lund, I worked with him at the Zone Seven Water Agency. He was our groundwater guru and he's a huge proponent when it comes to trails. So certainly appreciated his comments as well. So I see Councilmember Monroe, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I was so busy being annoyed with the argument going on between labor and developers under the guise of CEQA that I did not adequately make the same comments others have made. So I would like to add to that. There's been some comments about development and we have to, we will need to put affordable housing in. This is a really well-planned development. And with that, I would like to move that we approve the project.
Okay, Councilmember Monroe makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
That sounded like Dr. Carling.
Yes.
Okay, seconded by Dr. Carling. So we have, is the motion from Councilmember Monroe, the four points of the staff recommendation?
Why, yes, it is, in exactly those words.
In that order, right?
And in that order.
What a coincidence. All right, well, very good then. So it's been moved by Councilmember Monroe, seconded by Councilmember Carling. Any discussion on the motion? A real call, please.
Councilmember Monroe?
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer?
Hi.
Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner?
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn?
Hi. Passage unanimously. Moving on to five point oh two, this is a hearing to consider a request to amend.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could cut in real quick, I am going to have to leave the meeting. I am ill right now. I've got to, got to get out of here.
Okay, well, hey, the first most important thing is you have to take care of yourself. That's the important thing.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
So thank you very much for coming into the meeting tonight, but you stay well.
Take care. Take care.
Okay, Councilmember Coomer has left the meeting. We are now moving on to five point oh two, which is a hearing to consider a request to amend the development agreement between the City of Livermore and the Adventist Corporation to extend the terms for five years for the Catholic high school project located on Las Colinas Road, just adjacent to this property we just talked about.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager. And up next, senior planner Andy Ross will be leading us through this project this evening.
He's been busy.
He has been busy.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Great. So as you just mentioned, this is a request to extend an existing development agreement with the Adventist Corporation, which secures the conditional use permit for development and operation of a Catholic high school, as well as the terms and timing for the development of public improvements. The project site is one hundred and thirty-five acres. It's located off of Las Colinas Road and north of I-580, which is here. It's south of an existing neighborhood, residential neighborhood at the term, and adjacent to the terminus of Redwood Road. The part of the northern boundary, as well as the western boundary and a large portion of the southern boundary are all co-terminus with the city's municipal and urban growth boundaries. And as you mentioned, Mayor, it is next door to the Lassen Road site, which we just discussed, which is right here. Overall, the site has similar topography. It's relatively flat in this area, but it's surrounded by hills and uplands to the west and along the eastern side of the site. The Arroyo Seco runs east to west through the property and the Arroyo Las Pacidias flows, runs north to south, and the confluence of these two streams occurs in the southwest quadrant of the site. The general plan designation is limited agriculture and it has a floating community facilities high school designation. The site zoning is open space, which allows for public and quasi-public uses through a conditional use permit. In two thousand and five, the city approved the Catholic high school project through a conditional use permit. And this is secured through a development agreement. If the development agreement were to expire, so too would the conditional use permit unless certain key milestones have been met. So the conditional use permit authorizes a thirty-two acre school site. That includes a school buildings, a chapel, administrative offices, performing and visual art facilities, athletic fields, and approximately eight hundred parking spaces. And it would secure seventy-five acres of open space. So the high school is concentrated to this area here. The development agreement secures the development of the high school in this area, but it also establishes some other public improvements, including the extension of Las Colinas roadway here to Redwood Road via an emergency vehicle access with public bike and pedestrian access as well. The development agreement secures the undergrounding of existing overhead utilities, as well as the construction of a regional trail that would connect I-580 adjacent to Las Colinas roadway and north onto the adjacent property, ultimately connecting with the existing T-six near Ponero Street Drive. And the development agreement secures the preservation, a conservation of that seventy-five acres of open space which surrounds the campus. In two thousand and fifteen, the city and the Adventist Group agreed to extend the terms of the agreement to December twenty twenty. And over the last several months, the Adventists Corporation have been engaged with And over the last several months, the Adventist Corporation have been engaged with city staff regarding several aspects of the project and public improvements. Further, they have been engaged in discussions with the neighboring Lassen Road Townhome Project regarding some public improvements on the Adventist property. And because of this continued effort to move the project forward and secure these public amenities, staff recommends that the city council introduce an ordinance authorizing the First Amendment to the Development Agreement between the City of Livermore and Adventist Corporation for the development of a Catholic high school, extending the terms of the agreement for five years to December 2025. That concludes staff's presentation. Mr. Paul Baum Giovanni, representing the Adventist Corporation, is here and he and staff are available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's see, any questions for staff? One question I have, just a clarification. So the staff report said that the the Los Colinas Road goes right up to Redwood Road, but it's only an EVA. So Redwood Road does not cut through this EVA access, but the road from Los Colinas goes up to Redwood Road, but it does not connect for vehicles.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, very good.
But Mr. Mayor, you would, as Paul Spence, your Community Development Director, you would be able to have bicycles and pedestrians access?
Sure. But no, no, nothing except no vehicles other than emergency vehicles.
Correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'm going to open the public hearing, public comments. I see no hands raised. Do we have any comments on Zoom or YouTube?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you very much. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Any any discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Bob Warner, seconded by Councilmember Monroe.
I didn't, but I was going to, so.
Well, I saw you, your you, your video came up and I thought, and she's unmuted herself. So that must mean she's going to speak.
Very good, yes.
Master of the obvious, that's me. Okay, motion is made by Vice Mayor Warner, seconded by Councilmember Monroe. Any discussion on that motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe?
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer? Sorry, Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner?
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn?
Hi. All right, thank you. Moving on to 5.03, this is a hearing to consider amending the Livermore Development Code regarding solid waste enclosures.
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager. And this evening, Associate Planner Trish Ponto will lead us through item 5.03.
All right, I'm just giving Andy a break before he's back up here again for the next item. So can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a development code amendment for the solid waste and recycling enclosure section of our code. City Council adopted a goal to divert 75% of solid waste from landfills in support of diversion goals set by the county and the state. So all residences and businesses in the city are required to provide adequate facilities for the collection of three waste streams, which are solid waste, recyclable materials and compostable materials. For most residents, adequate facilities are the bins that we roll out to the street every every week for curbside collection, but a lot of larger multifamily and commercial developments require a detached enclosure like you see in the photo on the right here. And Section 6.03.130 of the Livermore Development Code establishes the standards for these enclosures. Staff is initiating some amendments to this section, primarily to update the requirements for when the standards apply and then to add some requirements for interior enclosures. We've seen more development applications recently that incorporate the trash room into the building instead of constructing a detached enclosure. We want to make sure that we have standards in place for these facilities and we make sure that they're adequate for the collection of all three of the waste streams. So the existing code requires that all multifamily uses with four or more units and all commercial, institutional and industrial uses approved after July 27th of 1994 have to comply with the enclosure standards. And then for those same uses that were existing before July 27th, 1994, the standards apply if there are modifications or additions to the uses or tenant spaces that exceed $20,000 worth of building permit value. So instead of using this kind of arbitrary date and building permit value as a threshold for when the project needs to construct or modify an enclosure, staff is recommending some amendments. So we are proposing that all new multifamily uses with five or more units instead of four and then all new commercial and institutional and industrial uses would be subject to the enclosure requirements. And we are increasing that threshold of multifamily units from four to five to be more consistent with the way the region and the state regulate things. And then also any new enlarged or relocated infrastructure enclosure must meet the current enclosure standards. And then any existing legal non-conforming enclosure must be modified to meet the current standards if there are additions to any building on the property, significant remodels to the buildings on the property. So things like paint and signage wouldn't wouldn't trigger this, be a significant remodel. And then if any enclosure retrofit is required by the building code or county health regulations, and that that would trigger them needing to come up to the current standards. As I mentioned earlier, we're seeing more applications for developments that incorporate the trash room into the building rather than building a detached enclosure. So this photo on the top right here is an example of some plans we approve where the trash room is located within the building. And our existing code doesn't address these interior enclosures. And we're proposing amendments that require the interior enclosures meet the same requirements as the exterior enclosures so that the facilities are adequate for the collection of all three waste streams. Similarly, we all, we have several buildings in the city now that use the trash chute systems, which our code also does not address at this time. The photo on the bottom is an example of plans that we approved that provided a chute system and they have separate chutes for trash and recycling, but they don't have a third one for compostable materials. So if residents in the building want to dispose of compostable materials, they have to go down in the garage and into the trash room and dispose of them there. So we're proposing to add a requirement that if you're, if you have a chute system, you have to provide separate and dedicated chutes for all three waste streams so that it's convenient to properly dispose of all of them. And then we are also proposing some other minor amendments. One is a written written agreement between an applicant and Livermore Sanitation that addresses access and collection procedures for the interior closure enclosures. And these aren't formal agreements, but more of a confirmation that Livermore Sanitation has reviewed the plans and they are adequate to meet their access and collection needs. We also added references to the city's design standards and guidelines and the Livermore Municipal Code to maintain consistency among the documents and make sure that anyone who's reading this code is aware that there are some other city documents that have applicable standards. And then finally, we added in some provisions to allow the Community Development Department and the Public Works Department Directors to approve some deviations from the standards if there are site constraints that make it difficult for a project to meet the standards. So we'll work with them to try to figure out something that works with everybody. So that, the planning commission and staff are recommending the city council introduce an ordinance finding the project is exempt from SEQA and approving the development code amendment. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions. And then Marissa Gann, who's a recycling specialist in our Public Works Department, is also here for questions.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilmember Carling, you have a question?
Yes, thanks, Tricia. Mr. Stein had some questions about sprinkler in the collection room, I guess, in these buildings with the chutes. And the answer, I didn't see a good answer in the in the report. So is that something that somebody's looked at since then?
I'm not sure if anyone has looked at the, Marissa, do you know more about that?
No, I'm not familiar with the sprinkle systems that are in place currently at the existing enclosure, interior enclosure facilities.
I think his concern was that if a fire started where the stuff is being collected, the chute's just going to provide a chimney to to spread the fire. And I was just wondering if there's a way we could learn more about that.
This is Paul Spence, your.